I'd like to call the Villages of North Fondleac Board of Trustees, me into order. Audience members, a request to sign on the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under Adam C. Roca.
Keith King, here.
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Mike, here, sorry.
(inaudible) (inaudible) in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible) ten minutes later, so. And a citizen's participation. First one of the tornado on severe weather awareness week, signed by Governor Walker. Whereas tornadoes create emergencies of great concern in the state of Wisconsin, with imminent threat to life and property and significant impact on all those who are affected. And whereas severe thunderstorm phenomena such as powerful wind gusts, large hail, flood-producing heavy rains, and lightning pose a threat to lives, safety, and property of the citizens of Wisconsin. And whereas Wisconsin averages 23 tornadoes each year, and whereas Wisconsin has 23 confirmed tornadoes in 2017, including an EF3 tornado on May 16th that traveled 83 miles through four counties, killing one person, causing widespread damage. And whereas tornadoes, severe storms, flooding, and strong winds have caused hundreds of millions of dollars in damage to homes, businesses, and local government infrastructure in Wisconsin. And whereas the citizens of the state of Wisconsin are participating in tornado drills at 1:45 PM and 6:45 PM on Thursday, April 12th, 2018, whereas the citizens of the state of Wisconsin can seriously be affected by tornadoes. Severe weather is essential to increase awareness of the dangers of severe weather damage and protective actions which can be taken. Therefore, Scott Walker, Governor of the state of Wisconsin, does hereby proclaim April 9th through 13th, 2018, as tornado severe weather awareness week throughout the state And number two. Proclamation proclaiming the week of April 9th as National Library Week. Whereas libraries are the heart of their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians work tirelessly to meet the challenging needs of their communities.
Alcohol awareness.
Make a difference?
Okay. Again, that is the second item, so.
Let's start over. Proclamation proclaiming the month of April, 2018, as alcohol awareness month. Whereas alcohol used by young people is dangerous, not only because of the risk associated with acute impairment, but also because of the grave threat to their long-term development and overall safety, well-being. And whereas 27% of students in the 2017 North Fondleac School District survey reported they drank alcohol in the past 30 days. And whereas Wisconsin has the second highest rate of binge drinking nationally, and 15% of students reported that they have five or more drinks in a row in the past 30 days. And whereas early exposure to alcohol can affect individuals once they become adults by increasing their chances of habitual drinking and becoming addicted to alcohol. And whereas adults have the responsibility to our youth to provide them with alternative opportunities by creating alcohol-free activities. And whereas drug-free communities of Fondleac County for the past nine years, through our continued efforts in the community along with key community stakeholders from 2009 to 2017, has seen a 45% reduction in youth 30-day use of alcohol and a 55% reduction in youth reporting binge drinking. And now therefore be resolved as the Villages of North Fondleac not only discourages the use of alcohol by those below the legal age of consumption, but also alerts all residents of the Villages of North Fondleac to refuse to provide alcohol beverages to underage youth and pledges to support police department efforts to identify this illegal and unhealthy activity. We call upon all citizens, parents, youth, youth-serving organizations, governmental organizations, public and private institutions, businesses, hospitals, and schools to support efforts that will reduce and prevent underage drinking in our community. Now therefore, I, Jim Moore, President of the North Fondleac Villages Board, do hereby proclaim the observance of the month of April, 2018, as Alcohol Awareness Month in the Villages of North Fondleac, Wisconsin. Darren?
Thank you. I just want to point out that Sandy Foote is here on behalf of Drug-Free Communities of Fondleac County to accept the proclamation. And I want to point out their tireless efforts in helping us combat not only juvenile alcohol but alcohol abuse, both in children and adults, over the course of the last 15-plus years. There's absolutely no doubt that they're making a difference throughout Fondleac County and here in North Fondleac. You know, there was the one statistic listed on here about the 45% reduction in the past nine years. Every year, we do surveys at the area high schools, including here in North Fondleac, and every year since its inception, since Drug-Free Communities has come on board and taken this on, we've seen continued decline here in North Fondleac of the number of youth that are reporting and being involved in underage drinking. So I am grateful for their efforts, and I think the village should be as well, so.
Sandy, we have a copy of the proclamation. Thank you so much for your evidence.
Thank you. And thank all of you for all of your willingness with the Drug-Free Community and the community to do and keep the alcohol out of the line. We really appreciate your support and your assistance.
Thank you. Third proclamation, proclaiming the week of April 9th as National Library Week. Libraries are the heart of their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians work tirelessly to meet the changing needs of their communities from providing diverse literature and life-scale classes to bringing services outside the library walls. And whereas librarians and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community, and whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals, providing technological training and access to downloadable content like eBooks. And whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, I therefore, Jim Moore, President of the Villages of North Fondleac, hereby proclaim the week of April 9th, 2018, to be National Library Week. And I encourage all residents to visit the public, Village Public Library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library sources available at the library. Staff reports, Minister.
Just a couple of items. A while back, we had talked about, we have one of the retired fire EMS vehicles, it's 509, it's the old fire rescue truck, that was put on Wisconsin surplus and was sold final with 10 o'clock on Friday, and it sold for more than we thought, sold for $5,930, which is for, it was a 1986 crew cab type vehicle, so we were very pleased with that result for that.
Wasn't that sitting down there a lot of years?
It was.
Ten, since we finally bought the other truck.
Yes, you're right, yeah. They had talked about somehow using it for something, but it never panned out.
We'll have to get that.
Yeah, and actually, it didn't take a whole lot to get it running again, which I was concerned how much we'd have to stick into it, but, so it did sell. Within the last couple of weeks, too, we launched our new website, so if you go to nfdl.org, you'll see it's a whole new layout. I think it's a little bit more of the times and current. One of the biggest things that it does, though, is it definitely increases the ability, the inability for people to hack into it. So we had that happen to our old one, where it was hacked, and so it was kind of a hurry to get the new one up and running, which it is. As we go, it still is going to be kind of work in progress, there's some things need to be changed on it, but it definitely is a step up from what we had. Those driving down Winnebago Street will notice that the fencing is going up on East Diamond. They're, I think, you know, fairly close, if not complete with that, and that definitely is refreshing that area, too, with taking out the old rusty fence. And finally, if you've driven up Chapman, too, you'll go past the mule park, and you'll see that the roof is now on the new pavilion. It's, I think, a bright new facility that's in there. We have a little work to hook the power up to it yet, but I think I noticed the company there that's doing some electrical work there today, so I'm hoping that is complete as well.
Chuck, you know what, she's ahead of Village Park this morning when I went by, they're taking the fencing off, and then...
Well, one part, they had put the fence on the outside of the post rather than the inside.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I think that's maybe what they did. On third base side?
Yep, uh, yes.
Yeah.
Third base, yeah.
So they had to take it off, put it in.
That fence behind home plate is that kind of angle out over home plate or toward the home plate?
No.
Just going straight up?
Yes. The other one didn't do that, so we didn't do it this one.
Police Department, Darren?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, Sergeant Amanda Tickenin had the opportunity to participate in mock interviews and social with the criminal justice program up at UW Oshkosh. I think this is the fourth year now that we've been invited to participate in that interview and social. It's a great opportunity for the kids to get to see what it's going to be like once they start going through hiring processes, and it's also a great opportunity for us to represent who we are and to introduce the kids to us as a police department and to encourage them to come and work for us once they do graduate. Speaking of which, our hiring process is in full swing. We were accepted applications through the month of March. We wound up with 36 applications, so we're in the process now of inviting all of those people in for testing, and we have several dates established this month to get everybody through the written test and panel interview. So hopefully, by the middle of next month, we'll be moving forward with making an offer to somebody. This past weekend was a busy one for us, and we had two hit-and-run accidents, one down at the Butchers Block and one in the Gaslight Terrace Mobile Home Community. In both cases, we were able to track down the drivers responsible and make arrests. In addition to that, we had two drugged-driving arrests over the weekend where the drivers of the vehicles were under the influence of both alcohol and narcotics, and in both cases also in possession of narcotics. So, again, busy weekend, but the officers were doing a great job of tracking those people down and getting them off the streets. That's all I have.
Thank you, Darren. Public work, Nick?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, Mitch and I held a pre-construction meeting for Indiana Avenue, both with the contractor. We always do a two-part meeting, so we did a contractor meeting at 3:30, just to discuss with the contractor, their plans, their subs. And then at 5:30, I think it was 5:30, we had a resident meeting here in this room. We always put out mailers and door hangers for those residents that are affected by the project. It's a small project, but, you know, we had a pretty good turnout. The contractor planned initially on starting on April, next Monday, April 9th, pending on the weather, so we'll see what happens in the next few days if that still happens. But their schedule, if the weather cooperates, would be like a five- or six-week schedule. They'd be in and out of there pretty quickly, but given it's April/May time that they're starting, I suspect we'll see some weather delays in that project. The completion date on the contract is June 29th, but we fully expect it to be done. Their original contract, their timeline showed it being done to mid-May, but that's based on perfect weather, so we're hoping by June, June, middle of June, for sure, it's completed. I guess I did this, didn't go, I was going to say I mentioned my weekly report, but it didn't go out in a weekly report, but the, I put, putting together a grant application for Stormwater Pond on Indiana Avenue, Ohio Avenue, we call it the Ohio Storm Pond. There's a possibility of getting a construction grant. There's actually a resolution tonight, I can explain that a little more then during that resolution, but it's kind of been a rush to get this pulled together and put in here, we just kind of learned of it, so we're hoping we can take care of two issues with one stone, so to speak, so. Along those lines, we've completed our MS4 Stormwater Annual Report last week and got that submitted to the DNR. We usually don't see any feedback on those. It's just basically our annual stormwater report, making sure that we're meeting the guidelines of the EPA's passed on to the DNR, and we've been doing that since, I believe, 2007, and really haven't had a whole lot of feedback at this point from the DNR, so I guess we'll assume we're doing everything right. This year, though, we expect the TMDL limits, the total maximum daily limits for Lake Winnebago to be handed out to the communities along wastewater and stormwater, so once that is in place, then we'll have a much firmer direction, I guess, on where we need to go from here with our stormwater. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nick. Consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following Village Board meetings. March 19th, 2018. Number two, approve invoices and authorize checks withdrawn in respect to funds. General Fund, $22,390.50. Outdoor Rec, $16,889.80. Library Fund, $689.45. EMS Fund, $650.53. Water Department, $24,042.94. Wastewater Department, $2,246.57. Community Development, $17.59. Stormwater Fund, $2,731.58. Our grand total of $69,649.16. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve. The consent agenda is read.
I'll second it. (inaudible) by King to approve the consent agenda. Questions or discussion?
I have a question. I just have a question about the core and main. It looks like we're buying those, page five, yep, the water meters.
Yes.
I guess what's the plan for that? Are we almost done with buying them?
Well, every year, you know, they have to be calibrated, what, every 10 years?
Yeah, but these are switching over to the I-Purls, so there's no, 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 that rule, so all the brass one needs to go out. I don't know, I don't think they're, I think they have a couple more years at least, I don't know at the time I had that, that's Darren, but they're, and then on top of what Chuck was about to say, is they need to be tested every 10 years, but that doesn't necessarily mean they need to be replaced, they just need to be recalibrated, but they're working on getting all of the brass meters out of the system, and there's quite a few left in the system. And I think it was a 10-year plan that they were working on, this is probably only year three, but I could have Darren follow up with.
Sure. I just noticed that we're at about, well, 55% spent last month, and I didn't know, like, how we're managing the budget for that.
Well, I think they do some of that early in the game.
Yeah.
So, I mean, about like 400, they're going to hopefully do for the whole course of the year.
Yeah, they typically, he probably won't buy any more meters this year.
Okay.
He usually does it as one purchase.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions or discussions? If not, in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, move to carry. Communications? Administration?
Just saying, maybe get on and vote tomorrow, you know, election day tomorrow, hopefully the weather's, yes, cooperates, so. It may not, I'm not sure.
I know Jen cooperated for the Easter egg hunt, but kept everything inside, so nobody got wet. Okay, Administration, number one, discussion, possible action on approving Tim Rogers to a full-time position in the EMS Fire Department.
I can just comment on that, with the resignation of one of the full-time paramedics, Tim is a, is a part-time, you know, filling in and doing some of our transport 502 services, so there was an open period for people to apply for that open position, two weeks, and based on the applications and the officers within the fire and EMS, they recommended Tim Rogers to the full-time position.
Okay, need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Tim Rogers' full-time position in EMS Fire.
I'll second it. (inaudible) by King to approve Tim Rogers as a full-time position in EMS Fire Department. Any discussion or questions? If not, in favor of approving Tim Rogers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, move to carry. Number two, discussion, possible action on the design of the Village Cut Stone Sign.
We had talked about this during the budget talks, you know, we had put money in the parks to, to, to do this particular project, looking at the corner of Winnebago Street and Prospect on the southwest corner. We have a meeting set up on Wednesday to go out to the quarry to look at possible stones for this. I, the one picture in black and white doesn't necessarily, the stone that they're looking at is going to be 10 feet wide, maybe eight feet tall, about eight inches thick, so I'm not quite sure the layout is going to look, they just did this on a piece of stone. The color one behind it just gives you an idea where that stone would be put in a place where it would be probably raised a little bit so they could do some landscaping around it. If you remember, Stewarts had said that they would like to take over that corner, they would do all of the landscaping, we wouldn't have to do anything, they would even mow the lawn. And so this is just one of the steps in that. Now, as I had mentioned in the cover letter, the optimists, who have been very generous to a lot of things happening in the village, had donated $750 towards, that's a big portion of that. And during that discussion, they had asked if it's possible that maybe down in the right-hand corner, we could put the Optimus emblem. And so I felt that that was definitely a question I should bring to the board to see if there was any concerns or reasons why we would or would not want that to happen, so. The other thing that I, I've always enjoyed when going through municipalities, it's like on 4th of July, Veterans Day, that you put up 30, 40 flags within that area, so it looks just very impressive, and so, to be honest with you, I'm going to go back to the optimists and see if they'd be willing to buy the flags for doing something like that as well. I think it could be very, very impressive on that. There will be electricity to the site, so we could have spotlights on the stone, and hopefully it'll be a good addition to the village.
Mike?
Quick question. It's going to go Guanego, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
The corner, and it's going to be back a little bit?
Yes.
So that...
It'll be raised a little bit, too.
So we can see around the end, and...
Yep.
Okay. Hope the optimists, I mean, I, they do a lot of stuff for the community, so I, but they, it's small and not too big.
Absolutely, yes.
And North Fondleac stands out, so.
Keith?
Hey, thanks, Jim. I agree with Mike. I mean, they give, correct me if I'm wrong, they give money to the DARE program every year, $500. They collect cans every Saturday for the pool, I know they've given multiple dollars to the pool. Easter egg hunt, the tournaments they have for the kids for basketball, the list goes on and on and on. I think they're a very valued thing. I wouldn't have any issue at all, as long as it's, you know, down in the right-hand corner or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would look nice. I mean, they, they're definitely a huge partner, the things they've done with the, help us out with the Veterans Memorial, the planting of the trees and shrubs at the field, football field, built a park. Goes on and on, so I don't see any issue at all with it. In fact, I'll make a motion to permit the symbol on the face of the cut stone.
Second. Motion by King, second by Streeter, to permit the Optimus symbol on the face of the cut stone. Any other discussion?
One quick question, does that include the underneath work coming around the footing and all that stuff, or is that the village going to do all that?
Well, the village would do that, and I was surprised that I thought we'd have to build the concrete footings and everything else, and they said, no, they should put it on stone. So, I, I'm going to find out more about it, but they said they, usually don't, so.
Okay, they know their business.
So that typically, that won't cost a whole lot to do that.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. In favor of permitting the symbol on the face of the cut stone, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, move to carry. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Discussion, possible action on approving resolution, R-06-2018, authorizing a smittle of the construction grant for the purpose of implementing measures to control agriculture or urban storm runoff pollution sources. Nick?
Thank you. I think I mentioned this at an earlier meeting, the pond down on Indiana Avenue, as part of the Indiana Avenue project, we had to verify with the DNR that the sediment depths in that pond, so we went out last fall, Mitch and I went in that pond with just waiters on and shot the sediment depths in the entire pond. And in doing that, came up with a, basically, there's about a foot, as an average on the entire pond, there's just under a foot of sediment that's built up over the last 14 years, 15 years it's been in business, I guess you could say. And basically, we're going to have to clean the pond out at some point, where, and I mentioned, I think that we're not sure when it, if they're going to force us to do it now, or if we can do it in two years from now. As part of this, about the same time we've been looking into this, there's a grant that came to our attention, that, for a construction grant of stormwater, and a consultant we work with kind of actually pointed this out to us and said, hey, you know, looking at your stormwater, this pond really should be deeper anyways to meet today's guidelines. It was only built with three foot of water depth, and really four foot is the minimum at today's standard. So he said, I can guarantee you that in a year when we come up with your, our recommendations for your stormwater plans, that we're going to recommend that that pond be dug deeper. So he came up with the idea of, why don't we look at doing this as a construction grant with the DNR, and then maybe we can take care of the sediment and deepen the pond at the same time. So, you know, he kind of did some rough numbers very quickly and thinks that just cleaning the pond is going to be in that, I had mentioned during the budget, I put $60,000 in there, he thinks it's going to be in that $40,000 to $70,000 range to clean the pond. And quickly put together numbers, the other option of actually digging the pond to five feet of depth, and he thinks that's going to be $150,000 to $170,000. This is a 50% match grant, so we'd be looking at, you know, $70,000 to $80,000 roughly at this point, that's very, very early on estimates, that we would have to cost share, but, you know, we would already maybe be spending $40,000 or $50,000 just to clean the pond, and we think that that's a much better route to go, especially when he's suggesting that, look, this is something you're probably going to want to do in the future anyways, once the new guidelines come out with the TMDL. So it's, basically, the risk involved at this point is about $3,500. It's what it's going to cost us to get this all pulled together and sent in. And I already have those dollars in there budgeted for this engineering work on this pond, so it's really not anything additional to the budget. But at least I wanted the board to be aware of what the risk was, if we don't get the, if we don't get the grant. The other thing I talked to him about is, if we don't get the grant, is it possible, because they do this, this grant is, one year is a construction grant, the next year is a planning grant, the following year is a construction grant, so they do that every year with these grants. And I said, is it possible that maybe we wait two years and apply for this grant again? All the legwork is done, so maybe that $3,500, even if we don't get the grant this time around, maybe it won't be completely lost. And the other thing, we, like I said, it's very late in the game here, it's due April 16th, so the resolution is a formality I needed to get done at this point. There's still a few conversations we need to have with the DNR in regards to this, because I want to make sure that if we go this route, the DNR is going to allow us to wait to clean the pond, because this wouldn't be available probably till 2018. And I said, is it possible that maybe we wait two years and apply for this grant again? All the legwork is done, so maybe that thirty-five hundred dollars, even if we don't get the grant this time around, maybe it won't be completely lost. And the other thing, we, like I said, it's very late in the game here, it's due April sixteenth, so the resolution is a formality I needed to get done at this point. There's still a few conversations we need to have with the DNR in regards to this, because I want to make sure that if we go this route, the DNR is going to allow us to wait to clean the pond, because this wouldn't be available probably till 2019, I think, is the grant dollars. So we still have some questions to be answered, but I guess at this point, I'm just looking for the resolution to be passed for the formality of it, to hopefully apply for this grant.
When do you, when do they plan on giving you an answer? I mean, is it anytime soon? I mean, I know you got applied by this, what, sixteen?
The application? Yeah, I don't know that.
I mean, is it, you know, six months, or?
I don't think it's that long, I think maybe in June or July is what he said, I'd have to verify that. What he did say is they basically rank all the projects, and they, you know, they have, he thinks they have one point five million, but it hasn't really been announced yet, and they basically just go down the list on their rankings, and when they run out of money, they run out of money. And he said, some years, they funded all the projects, and some years, there's, you know, it all depends on who applies.
Does it matter if you haven't had a project with them before, does it give you any extra leverage?
I don't know that.
Don't know that. The fill you're hauling out, where are you going to haul the fill to?
Well, that's a good question.
And is it, is it any kind of contaminated?
Yeah, it's, and that's, you know, that's something we're, we're already looking into it, it's actually based on the watershed and what the use of the land is. So we've been providing all these maps, and they're basically looking at that, it might have to be landfill, that's where a lot of the cost comes in on these projects. Yep.
Okay. Any other motion to...
I'll make that motion to...
Approve the resolution oh six, twenty eighteen.
I'll make that motion to approve that resolution authorizing this middle of a construction grant for a purpose of implementing measures to control agricultural or urban stormwater runoff pollution sources.
I second that motion.
First by Will, second by Price, to approve the resolution R dash oh six, twenty eighteen. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the resolution, say aye. 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 Foes, motion carried. Ordinance is, construction on, possible action approving resolution, no, ordinance, oh dash twenty eighteen dash oh three, rezoning two parcels, first reading, no action necessary. Nick?
I can give a quick summary of that, tonight's just the first reading, and the next meeting would be the second reading and public hearing portion of that, along with the plant commission would be involved prior to that. There's two parcels here, I'll talk about, the first one I'll talk about would be, I think it's the first page, it's more of a, it's a narrow lot. That lot is on the dead end of Winnebago Street. If you recall, there was, there was a rezone done back there, and some mini warehouses put up back there, along with some larger shop-type facilities. One of the owners of that, those properties, has acquired another property to the south, and they're asking that to be rezoned industrial. It does, definitely fits in that area, between that, the rail yard and the residential, and it's adjacent to the industrial already. So that's the first one. The second one is actually a school-owned property that whenever anything is, is annexed into the village, it comes in as R seven, which is temporarily unclassified, and this isn't just an effort to clean some of this stuff up. The school had approached us a few weeks ago about something on this site, and then looking at some of their facilities and stuff, and we just, we thought it would be a good time to get this rezoned to office-institutional, which is what it should be. And, because that, the R seven classification that is on it right now really is just a temporary classification, that everything gets, has it annexed into the village, so it's just cleaning that up, and the schools in agreement with that.
Okay. Any other questions on the two parcels? Let's move on. Motion to go into closed session. I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Discussion of personnel issue under Wisconsin State Statutes nineteen eighty-five, sub one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Number one, review of administrator conditional offer. For a second?
I second that motion.
Motion by King, second by Price, to go into closed session, roll call.